Good evening, everybody. Welcome to our meeting. I was like that call of meaning the order. Start and salute for the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Pongrane.
Here.
Mrs. Jacob. Mr. Gormack.
Here.
Mr. Coffin.
Here.
Mr. Merkelgum.
Here.
Mrs. Rash.
Here.
Mrs. Sharino.
Here.
And Mr. Wurz.
Here. All right, moving on right along. Thank you for coming. Uh, we want to do President's Report. Uh, thank you again for viewing or attending the meeting this evening. We appreciate your interest in Pen Ridge. It's, uh, been only two weeks since our last meeting, but we still have a lot to talk about. Um, I wanted to start tonight with our 2025 budget proposal. As you may know, the recommendation from our administration is to increase taxes, something we haven't done for eight years. As a board, we do not take this lightly. We have been pushing our administration to make cuts in the budget and get rid of waste, all without cutting any programs. This is an ongoing process as a board, and we will continue to vet all new spending proposals carefully. In the past few months, in the direction of the board, our administration, working together with many stakeholders, has already cut our budgeted spending by 6.5 million. Why do we need to raise taxes now? Despite the cuts to our budget, we still have a shortfall of 3.2 million dollars. The cost for the, of the need for additional revenues multifaceted, but the main driver of the increases, the costs of the last two contracts we approved in 2023. These are, we, were for the PEA and the PESMA contracts. These contracts are for all our teachers and support staff and represent the bulk of our employees. In 2023, the year before the new contract was approved, the total salary and benefits paid to these groups was 98.1 million dollars. With the new contract, the total salary and benefits paid in the coming year will be 103 million, 103.9 million, which represents a 5.8 million dollar increase. Why do, do I bring this up? Our prior board, who I was a part of, approved these contracts unanimously. We recognize that our school district had one of the lowest salaries throughout the county. This plus a number of reasons caused a dramatic increase in turnover that was affecting the quality of our educational outcomes. We made the choice to improve our pay scale to attract and retain talented employees. The reality of this is that we must pay for these decisions going forward. By voting against the tax increase, we're not acknowledging that our prior decisions have consequences, but playing political games during the election. By simply pulling the money from our reserves, we jeopardize our future success and may force cuts to our vital programs. As a point of reference, over the last 10 years, our rate of taxation has grew, has increased 4.3% or less than one half of a percent per year. I understand that any increase in taxes is not welcome and can cause difficulties for some of our residents, but I feel strongly that it's needed to continue keeping Pen Ridge fiscally responsible and continue evaluating programs. Another part of the deficit is caused by the lack of cyber charter school reform. If you've listened to me before, I've talked about this plenty of times. On the, uh, to note that we, I am happy to announce that, uh, House Bill Number 1372, I think I got that correct, has been recently reintroduced in the PEA House to reduce that cyber funding, something that's been talked about for many years. Now more than ever, we need to contact our state reps and state senators and put the pressure on them. We don't want to let the lobbyists win, and cyber charters have a lot of lobbyists. What really irritates me are the lies being spread by the cyber school, cyber charter school community. A representative of the very profitable Commonwealth Charter, Ken, recently was quoted as saying, "We would have to seriously look at our operations and have to pare back most, if not vast majority." Unfortunately, I think they forgot that they paid all their employees a $7,000 bonus and gave out 2.3 million dollars in gas stipends in one year alone. These are not reasonable expenses that our district could ever afford. I don't think it would hurt them too much financially. Uh, remember, this is not about school choice, but having an equitable formula for paying our cyber charter schools. Your tax dollars are being spent for them to receive the, these exorbitant profits. Please email your state reps and Jared Coleman, our state senator, and share this with anyone else you know in the state. If we pass this reform last year, our tax increase would be 25% less this year. Uh, it's amazing when you look at it that much, but it does add up. Moving on to more pleasant things, I had the pleasure of a tour and lunch at the Upper Bucks County Technical School the other day. Uh, if you haven't been to the lunch program, it's wonderful. The food's great. Um, it's, it's just like a regular restaurant, and I encourage you to go there. Um, I'd like to thank Mike Herrera and Dan Cullen for the excellent hospitality and the culinary crew for a great lunch. It was actually impressive to see how many outside customers they had. I believe it's available every Thursday and Friday. Is that correct? Do you need a reservation? Yeah, okay, need a reservation too. Uh, the service was excellent. The menu selection had tons of options, and the food quality was very good. I left feeling very impressed with the direction of our technical school. They continue to offer new career options and make sure our existing offerings are current. I also like what they're doing to make sure every student and parent is aware of the many benefits of pursuing an education at the Upper Bucks Technical School. The highlight for me was being taught how to weld, something I've never done before, and completing my first weld. I would like to thank Josh Kodak and Jackson Nygaard, who's a student there, for taking the time to show me the ropes. I was told by Jackson that it was pretty good for a first weld, so I'll take that as a compliment. It's always good to try something new and get out of your comfort zone. Um, I also, last month, thanked the cast of Blame Is, which I believe was based on your shirt. That's all you guys have left. Um, I had a lot, I had so many wonderful things to say, and, uh, it really is Broadway quality. Uh, it's, uh, amazing the amount of effort and, uh, the, this show was just, is probably the best one I've seen here yet, and it keep, continues to improve. So I thank you all for your time and your effort and for putting on an amazing show. It makes our community proud, and you should be very proud of yourself. All right. Moving on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Wurz. Uh, Teacher Appreciation Week, uh, was last week, and I want to take a moment to recognize what I believe is the life force of our school district, uh, our students, but our teachers. I'm confident that every adult in this room can recall a teacher or several who left a lasting impact on your life. Teaching is a challenging and deeply noble vocation, one that demands not just knowledge, but compassion, patience, and a commitment to the growth of others. Let us continue to hold our teachers in highest regard and with the respect they have earned, not just during one week in May, but every single day. So if you're a teacher in this room, maybe raise your hand. Okay, can we thank you? There's a lot of activity in the school district right now. The operational tempo is very, very high, especially in May, and, uh, a lot of things on the horizon like graduation, et cetera. It's one of the busiest months and on our calendar with Keystone Exams, BSSAs, AP Exams, and our seniors finishing up in less than one month and graduating at our beautiful stadium in just a few weeks. However, we still have a lot to celebrate tonight that I'll share with you. This weekend, we'd like to publicly welcome our entire community to two employment events. Our first ever transportation bus driver job fair will be held this Saturday, the 17th, from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM at our transportation center. There will be on-the-spot interviews, as well as representatives from the Transportation Department to walk, to talk to people about bus drivers and drivers and bus aid positions, their great benefits, and we will pay you 27 bucks an hour. So if you're sitting in the audience, you're retired, looking for another job, please join us. There will also be another job fair on Tuesday, May 20th, from 4:00 to 6:00 PM in the high school cafeteria. At this job fair, anyone who shows up can apply and be interviewed on the spot for any of our available positions. I would also like to invite our community back here to the high school this Wednesday for the annual District Art Festival. It's always amazing to see the incredible talent of our students. Please join us and see the displays, talk with our artists, and enjoy a night celebrating our visual and technical arts. And speaking of celebration, so the Blame Is crew, would you please come forward? Teachers, directors, students, please go forward, and hopefully we have enough room. Okay, so ladies and gentlemen. One theme about Blame Is this year, and Mr. Wurz just shared this as well, as he did last month's report. Um, I've been to a lot of musicals in my life, plays and productions, and hands down, this was the best musical I've ever watched, uh, at the high school level. And dare I say, and the theme this year, and let me get back to it, I'm jumping around, was Broadway level. The decorations, the heart, um, the, just exuded, um, each of you exuded. We have parent volunteers in front of us, we have our students, we have the directors, and I always feel like I'm forgetting something. Um, just so much time goes into a production like this, in the rehearsals, in the set, and I'm always amazed with our students, the memorization, the amount of preparation to remember your lines and be able to sing in the pit orchestra under, um, through the leadership direction of Mr. Vasta. It's just absolutely fantastic, and, um, I'm just glad to be part of it. I'm proud that of each and every one of you, you all have a, such a part, um, instrumental part, and also the fact that our students came to my office to personally invite me was just very, very touching, and I just, I can't, I'm not gonna read the speech anymore. Just. We got a photograph, and we have a couple certificates to hand out to the adults. Mr. Dowd Darrell Lowery. Record front center, Marine.
So Mr. Lowery graduated from Pen Ridge High School in 1968. Upon graduation, Darrell joined the United States Marine Corps. September 5th, Marine, he earned an honorable discharge and returned to the Pen Ridge community working with his family's business, the Renner and Lowery Furniture Store. In 1978, Darrell became employed with the Pen Ridge School District as a custodian at South, then transferred to Grass Elementary as a facilities manager. After retiring in 2012, he has continued his duties as a game manager, game manager for high school sports events. He has worked under seven athletic directors. In 2018, he was awarded Outstanding Service to Education. This school year is his 46th year of working sports events. Did we get the math right? Was it 46? Okay. So I'd like to just publicly commemorate you for your service. You go to the games, he's always there. Um, last two Octobers ago, I met him for the first time, and you can see him with his lovely family up there, but he's just one of those salt-of-the-earth Pen Ridge, um, individuals that is, just makes this place very special. So we thank you for your meritorious service, and most people would be retired. I think I'll be somewhere far away, but we love people like you that give back, so. You have a certificate for it.
Thank you, Mr. Lowery.
I just wanna add something, because I've spent some time in the box for lacrosse, and I've known Darrell a little bit. He taught me a trick to getting people out of the stadium after, again, to the game, because he has to be the last one to leave, so he just starts turning the lights off, slowly, even faster, and pretty much there's almost no light left. Everybody gets the message and then leaves. It's a good way to make things more efficient. It's been a pleasure meeting you again.
Thank you, Mr. Wurz. Last month, we introduced you to the entire girls' flag football team. We gave you a sneak preview of something big that was in the works. Tonight, we can officially tell you about three exceptional student athletes on that team. If you're in the room, please come forward. Kate Lupease, Casey Peace, and Sophia Rolseca were chosen as three of just 22 best flag football athletes in the entire Philadelphia region and will represent the Philadelphia Eagles in a tournament against All-Star teams that represents, represents the Steelers, Ravens, and Commanders. Congratulations. And Kia was able to join us tonight, we recognize, and we will also, all three of them next month, when Kylo there, um, we'll honor the three of them next month, so. Next, we are celebrating Mackenzie Robinson. If you're here, please come forward, from Pen Ridge High School. She received the Percocie Key to the Borough last week. Mayor Hollenbach, are you here? He's just here taking in. If you'd like to come forward, please come down. Percocie Mayor Jeff Hollenbach sent us this description of why Mackenzie received the key to the borough. Quote, "This award is presented to a high school senior who has demonstrated outstanding dedication to serving both her school and community. Through their commitment to volunteerism, leadership, and civic engagement, they have made a meaningful impact on the lives of others, whether through organizing events, mentoring younger students, participating in service projects, or advocating for important causes. They have exemplified, exemplified the values of compassion, integrity, and service." So we congratulate Mackenzie and thank you, Mayor Hollenbach, for coming down. Last week, I read a compelling Wall Street Journal article highlighting how students at Father Judge High School in Philadelphia, some still juniors, are getting job offers up to $70,000 a year in skilled trades like welding with no college debt. As more companies face worker shortages, they are partnering with high schools to offer students part-time jobs, internships, and direct-to-career pathways. Programs like Skills USA and the Heavy Metal Summer Experience are helping students explore high-paying, hands-on careers. It's a strong reminder of the value of our partnership with the Upper Bucks County Technical Technical School. These opportunities are real, and they are growing. So next up, I'd like to call Mr. Joey Clunin and our Upper Bucks Tech team, if you'd like to come forward, please, whilst I read this. Tonight, I would like to take a moment to recognize an exceptional young man, freshman Joey Clunin. Joey is currently enrolled in a small engine repair program at the Upper Bucks County Technical School and is joined this evening by his father, Joe, as well as several members of the tech school community. I have profound respect for this young person. Joey experienced a heartbreaking loss last summer with the passing of his mother, who was a beloved member of our Fender Elementary School staff. Despite this adversity, Joey's demonstrated remarkable resilience, bolstered by the support of his family and friends. He's thrown himself into his studies with passion and focus. Joey's already launched his own small engine repair business, showcasing not just talent, but entrepreneurial spirit. But his accomplishments do not end there. He still finds time to enjoy the outdoors, maintains an active social life, and his pursuit to become a pilot. I even had the opportunity to join Joe in one of his training flights. It was an incredible experience, especially when he practiced stall maneuvers, uh, which involved cutting the engine, didn't warn me about this, in midair to rehearse emergency responses. I was having flashbacks from memory core. Needless to say, Joey handled it with skill and confidence. And if that were not impressive enough, if you happen to have any landscaping equipment needs, uh, he, he's your guy. He has business cards and everything, but he is truly, truly an impressive young man with a bright future ahead. So please enjoy me in applauding Joey Clunin for his perseverance, passion, and promise. And before you go anywhere, Dr. Herrera, uh, Dr. Cullen, or the, uh, your teacher, does anyone want to say anything? Um, there's a microphone right over here. I'm sorry to put you on the spot.
That's okay, I'm, I'm used to it. Um, yeah, Joey came into my class, and, uh, he's Level One with me. Fantastic group of students this year. Uh, Joey, right there, leading the pack, um, really, you know, coming down here tonight, thinking, all right, I'm gonna be asked to say something, what am I gonna say? And, uh, really what, what, what came to mind was, um, Joey really took it to heart. In the beginning, I would say, listen, students, I need you to come in here every day and add value to this class, because when you get out in the world, that makes a good employee. When you get in a relationship, that makes a good partner, add value. And I'm, I can absolutely honestly say, every day, that kid comes in and adds value to my class, so keep up the good work, Joey.
Thank you very much. All right, Dr. Herrera, were you going in?
I, I echo those words, and we really appreciate the, um, collaborative partnership that we have with Pen Ridge and, uh, members of the board, uh, administration, teachers, and staff, uh, working together. Uh, we create great outcomes, like Joey. We're very proud of him, and we're thankful for our partnership.
Finally, tonight, we would like to take a moment to offer a very special commendation, one that recognizes not only a long career, but a legacy of excellence, devotion, and quiet generosity. Mr. Alan Andrew Kites, our STEM coordinator, is retiring after 44 years of meritorious service to the Pen Ridge School District. He began his journey here in 1981 after graduating from Millersville University, and over the course of more than four decades, he has left a profound and lasting impact on students, staff, and our entire community. To know Alan is to appreciate his sharp wit, his unmistakable sense of humor, and let's just say, his willingness to speak his mind. But what many may not know is that Alan reports the work every Saturday unpaid to mentor aspiring teachers and help students with projects. That kind of selfless commitment speaks volumes about his character and dedication. In fact, this past fall, we hosted educators from Germany, and I took them to see, to visit with Alan, and they were blown away by his precision and his craftsmanship. That moment reinforced what we've always known. Alan is not just a teacher of STEM, he's a living embodiment of it. His passion, his craft, and his impact transcend classroom walls. Alan lives in Franconi with his wife, Ginny. They have three children, their daughter, Elena, her husband, Jimmy, and their two sons. AJ, who lives in Nashville with his wife, Taylor, and their other son, Alex, who lives in Philadelphia. Alan also has two grandchildren, Kylie and James. In addition to all the best things about Alan that we will miss, we will all, will also be the constant sounds of Johnny Cash and other country singers flowing from his classroom. He's a huge Johnny Cash man. This past weekend, he caught Chris Stapleton and George Strait with a link. He sent me a couple pictures of his shows. I will admit, I tried my best to talk him into just one more year, but Alan has made it official. He is closing this chapter and wrapping up a truly, truly remarkable career. Tonight, I'm honored to present Alan Andrew Kites with a combination plaque on behalf of the Pen Ridge School District. While we have several exceptional retirees this year, the weight of 44 years paired with the legacy he leaves made it essential for me to offer this special recognition to our community. Alan, thank you for your tireless service, your mentorship, your craftsmanship, and the indelible mark you leave on Pen Ridge. Your legacy will continue to shape the district for years to come. Please join me in congratulating Mr. Alan Andrew Kites. We're not quite done yet. If a teacher is doing it right, they don't ever think about their personal or professional legacy. They spend their time learning how to make every part of their effect on students as impactful, beneficial, and as important as possible. For 44 years, Alan Andrew Kites not only did that, but also he never stopped learning new techniques to become the finest craftsman and woodworker in the country, one of them. And those aren't my words. Those words come from your students. For 44 years, Alan Andrew Kites has been showing students what true craftsmanship and passion for that craft looks like, and dozens of the students have gone on to teach the next generation of artisans, start their own businesses of high-quality woodworking, and countless other ways. You can see samples of his artistry out here tonight, and you'll see much more at the art festival coming up this week. Alan, your legacy at Pen Ridge is embodied by the lives you have touched, taught, and inspired, and many of them are here tonight to honor you as well. Come on in, guys.
Many times, I played tic-tac-toe in a student's project, but if something that's not right and needs to be sanded off, I helped him sand it off. and needs to be sanded off, I help him sand it off. Oh, my gosh.
Chris Parker, congratulations. I'm not doing any push-ups.
Guys, get together for a picture with Alan. Come on over. Come on over, guys. Let's all huddle around. All right, there, guys, right here. Ready? One, two, three. Our friends from the news would like to come too. Come on in, guys. Also, we invite the news media here for you, Alan, and Channel sixty-nine's a feature story on you, so you might want to head to your shop, guys, have a little reunion back there, a little bit. Congratulations. That concludes my report. Mr. Burson. Moving on to the student liaison report. Brendan?
Hi, everyone. Brendan Ray. I'm filling in for Isabella tonight. I just wanted to share a couple of things that are going on for the students right now. We just have the closure of the spring sports starting. The teams are now making it to the district level. Under the track team, we definitely have a couple few runners who are getting there, and really, really cool to see them practicing, still running, and really putting in a lot of hard effort. To make it that far up is really, really awesome. We are on our last week of AP in Keystone, which honestly, even personally, I'm very excited for. I know the Bayou Keystone's are tomorrow. My freshman brother will not let me forget about it, because I have to take him in. But the AP exams are wrapping up this week, and that's really awesome. And a really, really exciting thing that we also touched on earlier was the spring concert and art show, the festival, I think it was, on Wednesday. So really, really cool, or combined with some amazing music from our music department, it's gonna be a great event. So I know I'm definitely going. I hope to see you all there. And then as for seniors, we're ready for the upcoming events, the Disney trip, I know, is coming up this weekend. I'm really excited. I'm pretty sure everyone going is really excited too, especially after all the hard work that this week is gonna have. Going to Disney afterward is gonna be just so rewarding and so fun. Then after that, we have the picnic, the walk of the elementary schools, and the senior sunrise, just to name a few. And to wrap things up, I just wanted to introduce our new student liaison for next year, which is Zoe Brown. She could stand up real quick. Everybody just give her applause real quick. She will be serving as your student liaison for the twenty-twenty-five and twenty-twenty-six school year, so she will be taking mine in Isabella's spot next year. But that's all I have for you guys tonight. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate the update. Moving on to public comment. First up is Sheri Lee. Before you get up, according to policy nine oh three, public comment on matters of concern, official action, or deliberation is limited to three minutes and should be directed to the entire school board following the announcement of your name and municipality. Under this policy, the presiding officer has the authority to warn or stop a public commenter from when a violation of this policy occurs.
Hi, good evening. Sheri Lee, Hilltown Township. So my husband and I moved to Hilltown Township in the Pen Ridge School District in the summer of two thousand and three. Our youngest two of three daughters went through all twelve years in this district and graduated from Pen Ridge. I rise tonight to comment on the agenda item, approval of the twenty-five, twenty-six general fund proposed final budget. There is a funding crisis facing our school district. Eight years of no tax increases, in theory, is a wonderful idea. However, now this district's up against the wall. Charter schools have taken more money from our district through an unfair funding equation. I'm glad to hear there's a house bill that was recently introduced. The federal government is cutting funding to public education. Special education will be hit the hardest. One of our middle school buildings is older than the district itself. Our elementary buildings only have air in large group spaces, but not the classrooms. And if people are okay with that, then maybe try spending the end of August, beginning of September, and the first few weeks of June in them, helping out, sweating your butts off, right along with the students and teachers. Speaking of teachers, my kids had some of the best. Many of them have left the last couple of years. My kids also had some of the best courses and extracurricular programs available to them. I'm sad for the current students and what may have to get cut if there are no increased dollars coming in. So hear me out. Raise my taxes, please. I am absolutely okay with it if it means fixing our buildings, paying our teachers and support staff, and keeping the kids in our community happy, healthy, and involved with all the educational and extracurricular opportunities available to them. Thank you.
Hello. Hey, everybody. Tom Gar, Percival Borough. I don't have a written statement, so I figured I'd just speak from the heart, off the cuff. First, I wanted to thank you guys for passing the resolution at the last meeting. I think it's really important, a very important message to send to the community, as well as to attract the attention of other school districts that might be feeling the pinch in much the way that we are. I think that it was especially impressive, because it was passed six to two, so it can show that we can reach across aisles to really do what's right, and I think that's important to show the community. Secondarily, on the proposed tax increases, eight years without a tax increase is a long time. We all know that as inflation hits and things become more expensive, it's hard to balance the budget. And though no one really likes to increase taxes, we know that it's necessary, and we know that you're doing everything that you can to be fiscally responsible. I'd also like to take a moment to apologize for what you might be about to hear, where people will accuse you of political hackery, some sort of agenda of some kind, that raising this tax is some sort of message to send to the rest of the community. But no, it's balancing budgets, and I think it's important and responsible to do. And that's it. I just wanted to thank you guys.
Hey, Laura Foster, East Rock Hill. Ron, thank you for bringing up in your opening statements about contacting our state legislators, like Jarrett Coleman and Sacks, both of them are on the Education Committee. I think it'd be wonderful if this board led by example. Christine, you should take the lead and be the one that is contacting our legislators on behalf of Pen Ridge, since you're the one that said that you wouldn't sign the resolution because you wanted to act on a state level. I look forward to hearing how those conversations went at the next school board meeting. So for years, Pen Ridge has insisted that we're living within our means. With our old board, the mantra of no new taxes was said, as if it's some badge of honor. But let's be clear, this wasn't fiscal responsibility, it was negligence. You don't ignore a leaky roof or outdated building just because you don't want to spend money. That's not planning, that's avoiding reality. The old board acted like a mini Doge, making decisions unilaterally, disregarding the actual needs of our schools and communities. For eight years, they refused to invest in our future. Were you unaware of what a new roof costs? Bob, about how interests work? Or what a bond rating even is? Or do you just not care? So now we're in crisis, and your solution? So Jordan suggested that we cut full-day kindergarten. This is something that was just implemented to finally be competitive with our other districts. And her reasoning? She actually said it's because her husband doesn't like to spend money. Meanwhile, Bob, who was on the Finance Committee forever, needed a tutorial on how interest works. Why are we trusting these people with a multimillion-dollar school budget? Let's not ignore what's really going on here. Well, they got everybody up in arms over scary authors like Langston Hughes and the book Heather Has Two Mommies. They've been quietly letting our district fall apart because of their agenda. Their agenda will always be, not to fix public education, is to dismantle it. Start the system, watch it fail, and then point to privatization as a solution. And if you're wondering what to expect from others in the party, look no further than who's backing them. Jeffrey Yass, the wealthiest person in Pennsylvania, is a mega donor. He pays a salary at least one of the new school board candidates. Yass spends twelve million dollars alone in helping Roy Abbott push privatization in Texas. He's also a major contributor of Jarrett Coleman. His mantra, nothing is more valuable than school choice. Not strong public schools, not well-supported teachers, not our kids' futures, just choice, if you can afford it. So we see through it. We know our schools are worth investing in. We will not let Pen Ridge be used as a stepping stone in someone else's agenda to destroy public education. Thanks.
Ross McLennan, Hilltown. Can I get that? Can I get Alan's job? How'd we interview for that? I love that guy. I was so happy that I had a chance to meet him and get in the woodshop. Amazing shop. I've seen a lot of shops. That was my planned statement. But honestly, I'm not qualified. But I'd take that job in a second. Okay, I do not have a problem with the proposed tax increase. I've been concerned over the years trying to hold back or using rainy day funds to balance the budget. The reality is, our property values have gone up significantly. Most of our wages have gone up, and if we're to have a good school system, we need to pay for it. Fact is, we are one of the lowest villages in Bucks County. I'm originally from the Lehigh Valley, where school taxes, especially in Easton, are considerably higher. And New Jersey is even more. I want to thank the administration for doing such a great job on the budget. Hopefully, they can still keep those buses running. As you mentioned, the state right now is considering a change to the cap on cyber charter schools having a direct impact on our expenses and my taxes. The board's resolution signed off six to two was a great idea. Suggests we all contact our state senator and congressman and ask them to vote to level the playing field. Thank you. Dane Bebernitz?
Did I correct that word?
You got it right this time, yeah. Hi, everybody. I wanted to take a moment and thank the current school board for their thoughtful investment, debate, and problem-solving regarding the funding concerns on the table. From the time spent at these meetings, especially insight provided by Sean Dover and other experts, I've seen some wise recommendations to save our taxpayers' money while also providing the very best for the children in our community. I especially wanted to highlight the following measures. The resolution approved by this board to advocate for funding stability from both state and federal monies. We cannot rely on lip service during a time of upheaval, and ensuring that continued funding means less pressure on increased local school taxes. I want to thank the wisdom of the school board to focus on financial prudence. A prioritization on refinancing and repaying the loans taken out by previous boards means a lessened financial burden in the future. Along with repaying these loans, I encourage our board not to engage in short-sighted tapping of our accounts to balance today's budget and leave us behind for future projects. Last one is Pen Ridge Online Learning, which that presentation last month was just stellar. I wanted to thank Karen Fager and everyone at Pen Ridge Online Learning. Having estimated savings of half a million dollars a year while providing objectively better programs than those of the greedy private charters. Better grades, more involvement in the community, and more access to the school, the school extracurriculars is an incredible opportunity and one that I encourage every family in Pen Ridge to take a serious look at. With those things, I thank you all, board, for doing what you need to do to make, to balance our budget. Thank you.
Good evening. Public education is the key, cornerstone, backbone ingredient for maintaining democracy and freedom of our country and for preparing young people for future success. Young people are natural resources to be nurtured and developed. Consider the advice given by the headmaster to his student son in the Great Bakers movie, "Work hard now so you have choices later." Public school education first began in the mid eighteen hundreds. In eighteen ninety-two, the National Education Association recommended that children should receive twelve years of education, consisting of eight years of elementary or grammar school instruction, followed by four years of high school. The National Department of Education, which is currently under threat, and state government legislature share power over education, with the states exercising most of the control. Funding is spread out between the federal and state governments and local communities. Here's my main point. Despite its importance, no common sense, well-conceived method has been designed and created to financially support public education. Inequitable financing has resulted in court case decisions in Pennsylvania. On the surface, the federal No Child Left Behind initiative seemed to encourage improvement of public school education. However, over successive years, criteria standards were ratcheted up so that no school could realistically hope to continue to receive federal funding. Cyber, private, and charter schools continue to siphon off public school funds from their budgets, especially challenging the budgets of poorer school districts. Instead of Band-Aid cures or wholesale wreckage of public school programs, why not work to maintain what is great, find out what needs improvement, and then seek to create solutions to any problems? One must wonder, is the current goal of government to cause public education to fail for the forty-nine point six million students currently enrolled in elementary and secondary schools? Wealthy families can afford to send their students to private schools. What is to become of education for the remaining students? Public schools provide an honest opportunity for all students to develop into their best selves. In my opinion, at present, we are an important critical thinking skills crossroads. I believe a quality, correctly financed public education needs to become a priority so that all students, no matter what zip code they live in, have an ability to learn the skills necessary for their future success. The attainment of knowledge, work ethic, strong character, cooperation, training, civility, and respect for rules within society, and low corruption rates are key pieces to the puzzle. Great education for all needs to cause and effect improvements in openness to the best global thinking, quality of leadership, individual group productivity, innovation, inventiveness, and so forth. It's a well-known fact, it is much cheaper-
Can you wrap up soon, please? Sorry.
Yes. It's a well-known fact that it's much cheaper to educate someone in a quality fashion than to house and attempt to rehabilitate them in prison. Like so many problems we face as a nation, rather than running away from this situation, it's high time we collectively put on our thinking caps to create well-thought-out solutions for public school quality and financing. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Carly Taylor. I'm from Hilltown. I just wanted to come here tonight to thank the board for forging a path forward creatively and logistically to continue to support our students, strengthen our schools, strengthen our community. I spoke at last month's meeting in support of the extra duties responsibilities increase, so thank you for passing that unanimously. It really shows your dedication to continuing to find ways to make our school district even stronger. So please, keep doing that. Again, also, the full-day kindergarten. I have a five-year-old starting at grass next year. I have a five-year-old starting at grass next year. She is so excited about the kindergarten program. Um, we live on the edge of the district, so a lot of her friends are going to districts that already have full-day kindergarten. Their parents were surprised that we potentially were not going to have that option, um, and it would break my heart to have to tell her that all her friends are going to a new shiny school and riding the bus, and she doesn't get to do that. So thank you for doing that. Thank you for, um, my other mom friends and parent friends who feel the same, so keep going. Thank you.
That concludes our poll comment. What's that? It might be, it may have been. Oh, I did skip you. I'm so sorry. I crossed your office phone. Jane Kramer-Tar.
I spent ten minutes writing this, you can't read. I got it, just have to deliver. Jane Kramer-Sellersville. Uh, I came out tonight to thank the board for passing the resolution in support of public education funding. Uh, I hope Congressman Fitzpatrick and Senators Metterman and McCormick, uh, will take this resolution to heart and advocate on our behalf and behalf of our students. Um, I also, I encourage the board and general community, uh, to follow up on cyber school funding reform, uh, as, uh, Mr. Wertz had talked about in his opening, uh, presentation. Uh, specifically following up by calling, uh, State Rep, uh, State Senator Coleman and our state reps for the Penrich Area Labs and Stats. Uh, I really encourage everyone on the board and in the community to reach out to them. Uh, today I received an email from, excuse me, educator voters of PA about, um, Pennsylvania virtual charter schools. And in the email, they talked about how they spend half a million dollars a year, um, on search engine optimization. Uh, other marketing money that they spend in, in the amount of about two-hundred-and-ninety-thousand dollars. Uh, twenty-three thousand dollars to Comcast Spectator sponsorship, uh, eighteen thousand five hundred to Hershey Park, twenty grand to Lehigh Valley Phantoms Hockey sponsorship. I think, uh, they, I don't know, they rent out the Zamboni or something. I don't know exactly what, what they're doing. Um, but that's a lot of money, and it, it just seems pretty obviously a grift. Uh, so I hope all of us, uh, can come together to reach out to our elected representatives and encourage them to, uh, get behind the bill that, that Mr. Wertz mentioned in his opening. I also wanted to thank the board and administration for moving forward with implementing the PACE survey, um, with a clear option of opting out as an accommodation. While no survey is perfect, PACE provides the state, county, school district, and local human services with good information on the needs of our students and can help the district determine if interventions, uh, to address issues that are national trends are needed here in our district. You know, for example, you think about years ago, PACE helped us identify that the opioid epidemic wasn't just out there, it was here. Uh, it was here in Penrich, and we learned that kids were getting access to opioids, uh, like oxycodone, from their parents' medicine cabinets. Uh, in response, uh, the Bucks County Drug and Alcohol Commission launched community education and prevention efforts like the medication takeback. So thank you for, for bringing PACE back.
Sorry about that. Okay, now we're moving on to consent calendar. I would like to make a motion to approve items B through F. And G, G, M, S, G. B through G. Uh, is there any questions or comments?
Mr. Wertz, I need to abstain from voting on item G due to a conflict of interest.
Okay, we'll pull that out separately. We will go, uh, so I'll make a motion to, um, for items B through F. Can you, second?
Second.
Uh, Mr. Kaufman, second. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Moving on, I make a motion for item G, uh, Superintendent's Personnel EDR Report. Need a second?
Second.
Mr. Merkelgum, second. And any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those against? And one extension. Moving on to curriculum. Mr. Merkelgum?
At our May fifth curriculum meeting, uh, we received a presentation going over Penrich's high-quality cyber and cyber hybrid programs, uh, which comes with the flexibility of cyber education, access to school activities, and the presence of the caring Penrich community here in our own backyard, not to mention the significant savings it would represent to the communities and taxpayers over for-profit cyber education models. Uh, we are voting tonight on approvals of obsolete items, uh, so I would like to call, without further ado, for a motion to approve items A through D on the agenda.
Seconded by, who?
Leah.
Oh, Ms. Ratch. Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those against? Motion passes eight to zero.
Our next curriculum committee meeting is scheduled for Monday, June third.
Moving on, Facilities, Mr. Kaufman?
The Facilities Committee met on May sixth. We discussed the bid results for the electronic access control modifications, and then obsolete items for Dive Letter Elementary School, which were chairs and Essential Middle School, AV carts, and vests. Can I get a motion to approve item B, the approval of the electronic access control?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Reed. Uh, questions or comments?
I do have a, a quick question. So, and I can't get into my email, I'm sorry, but in the minutes, it listed, like, the motion is four-two, around two-hundred-and-eighteen thousand, but in the, in the minutes, it showed that we have a four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand grant for it, so I guess I'm confused as the discrepancy, and then we're still putting forth like forty-two thousand, if my memory is around those numbers. I just was confused with this number versus the number that was on the minutes.
Sean, you want to?
There was a, there was a project, project approved by Dick, um, one or two ago by the board for, um, replacing the door entryways, and that was the, that's the other part of the money.
Other part of the money, okay.
I'm sorry, of the money, yeah. This is the, uh, safety and security grant.
Okay.
Both those projects will be paid for, both these projects will be paid for with that grant. The excess is about forty-five thousand dollars, which we need to come from our capital.
Okay. Thanks.
Other questions or comments? I do want to thank, I guess Dan was the one who spearheaded this. This was a four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar grant received from the government based on the efforts of our finance group and Dan to secure that, so, um, doing all this upgrade which costing us a very real money, so.
Yes, Mr. Gury served that grant.
Yes, and that was a huge win for us when we get an extra four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand to upgrade security. Other questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those against? Motion passes eight to zero.
And then can I get a motion for the approval of the obsolete items, which again were the chairs from Biblewood Elementary School, and then the AV carts and the vests from Central Middle School.
Second.
Questions or com, questions or comments? All, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those against? Motion passes eight to zero.
The next Facilities Committee meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, June tenth.
Moving on to finances. The fin, uh, last meeting of the Finance Committee was, uh, May sixth. Moving right along, we first go on to the contracts, approval of a bunch of different contracts. I'd like to make a motion to approve items A through J, and if you would like to bring anything else, let me know. I need a second.
Second.
Mr. Merkelgum, second. Any questions or comments or concerns on any of the contracts? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those against? Motion passes eight to zero. Moving on to the approval of the PSBA membership renewal. PSBA is the Pennsylvania State School Board Association, and they provide training and a bunch of other things with policies that we, um, sign up for every year. So I'd like to make a motion to approve the PSBA membership, uh, for twenty-twenty-five.
Second.
Second, Mr. Kaufman, questions or comments?
Actually, I just want, sorry, uh, just in reference to reach out to you state legislators, um, PSBA is holding an advocacy day tomorrow, which, um, I kind of found out about it last minute, but I was able to sign up, and I'm going to go to Harrisburg tomorrow to have meetings with, um, Representative Stats, Representative Labs, and Senator Coleman. So, um, this is one of the things that PSBA does do for us, um, they organize these types of meetings, so see value in that.
Mr. Wertz, I was just gonna ask if we've looked lately at whether or not there's different levels of membership available at different prices. Maybe it's a big number. I mean, I generally see that there is value in the organization, but, um, just with the budget discussion, I wasn't sure if there was, again, different levels available to us.
I can, we can check into that. I'm not aware of it, but, uh, certainly don't know that much about it. Uh, does anybody have any? As far as the only time I've seen any voices, it's a lovely thing, but that doesn't mean, um, and I'm not sure if there's other options out there.
I feel like there's not, I guess it is a big chunk each year, I guess it's been, I feel like the most place where we use it is for our policies, however, you know, I feel like we have our solicitor and, you know, our committee, so, um, I know, it's, it's tough.
Their leadership conference that I attended, uh, last year was very valuable, a lot of good networking, you got to talk to a lot of different school board members in the state and see what they were working on, so I found that part pretty valuable. Um, I think they offer a lot of other services that we do not use, maybe through, uh, so we think we can research that some more, too.
I know that, um, sorry, I have to go. They do offer, um, I have signed up for, um, a number of their classes, and they, they offer, um, basically included with the membership, Robert's Rules of Order classes, fiscal governance classes, um, you know, different starters, especially for people who are new to being on boards. Again, it's free to, to take these classes, so, um, you know, there's opportunities for things out there. I think it's just, uh, that we need to do a little bit more research and due diligence on our end to find some of this stuff, but, um, you know, to, to take that effort to kind of find these things for, for all of us.
They, they also do provide our required school board training, which we all have to undergo, so don't really leave that out because it's a key part of what they do. All right, any other questions or comments?
I'm just gonna add to that. I've used them in the past, also just reaching out to some of their solicitors they have on staff with questions. They've been very responsive and helpful.
And I guess they don't charge us for that advice either, do they?
No.
Unlike other people. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those against?
Nay.
Motion passes seven to one. Moving on to the next approval of the Student Activity Club. Uh, we have a new one up for vote tonight, um, motion to approve the National Arts Honor Society, which is similar to the National Honor Society, except it's focused on children in the arts, and that's our new club for the month. Uh, any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes eight to zero. Um, up next is a list of bids for all, a lot of the consumables and things we use for the schools and for the school year. Um, so, uh, these are all bidding of multiple sources, and we take the lowest bid, so it's done as fairly as possible. Um, I'd like to make a motion to approve items A through G.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Kaufman. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next up is the approval of the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six general proposed, uh, general fund proposed final bid, motion, budget. Uh, so I talked about this earlier, I'm sure we'll have some comments, but I'd like to make a motion to approve the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six general fund proposed final budget as presented on the PDE Form twenty-twenty-eight. Revenues and expenditures are balanced at a hundred-and-sixty-three million, one-hundred-and-fifty-nine-thousand, uh, two-hundred-and-thirty-nine dollars, and set the real estate tax at rate at one-forty-point-one-eight-nine-two mils, an increase of four-point-nine-three-three-seven mils, or about three-point-six-five percent. Now, you, second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Ratch?
Yep.
Uh, questions or comments?
Do you have a comment? Any of us do? So, before I vote tonight on first of two budget votes, I just want to give some clarification on the reasoning behind my vote. I start by saying that it's safe to say that none of us up here want to increase taxes. However, we are elected to do what is in the best interest of our district, of our community, and our students. When we started this process with Mr. Dalbert, the goal was to balance the budget and make sure we're set for the future. As time went by, it became clear that as a district, we would not be able to balance the budget in a financially responsible manner. And during the past months, in our finance committee meetings, it has also become clear as to why we were able, we were unable to balance the budget. During our committee meetings, Chief Operating Officer, Mr. Dalbert, was clear as to why we would be unable to balance the budget, but that did not stop him and/or administration from working hard to find ways to cut costs without compromising or jeopardizing our students' education and the future of this school district and community. I would like to highlight some of those efforts for you. Dr. Barrios led multiple cabinet meetings focused on budget reductions. Revenue and expenditure accounts were reviewed and adjusted accordingly. The personnel budget underwent thorough analysis and building-level staffing meetings were held. District-wide needs for teaching assistants and personal aides were assessed. Curriculum-related software was reviewed, and reduction were made in maintenance equipment and a number of replacement buses. Technology software and supply expenses were also decreased. Additionally, retired teachers were replaced with new hires at entry-level salaries, among other cost-saving measures. The total savings implemented since the beginning of these efforts have been over six million dollars. While it may be perceived that the decision to increase taxes is an easy one, I can assure you it is anything but. In reality, this is less a matter of choice and more of necessary step to ensure the continued success of our district and, most importantly, our students. Let's not forget the amazing things we have done in the past year and a half, including a new social studies curriculum in the elementary schools, a new science curriculum in the middle schools, added EDR funding, expansion of the high school stem, adding additional autistic support and speech teachers, and of course, full-day kindergarten that we'll be phasing in next year. These are all things that our students need and deserve. They are things we cannot kick down the road. Our students are with us for a short period of time, and we have to make sure that in that time, we're doing what we can to elevate their success in the future. And in order to do that, we have no choice but to raise taxes. Although this is not something you want to hear, I'm sure you too will understand the reasoning behind my vote and be a bit a part of the budget journey for the past months. And if you haven't, I urge you to listen to our past finance committee meetings on our YouTube channel and get the facts, like how we're down three percent in our earned income tax, how prices of everything is increasing, and how realis, our real estate tax is flattening. With hearing the facts, you will see for yourself why we're in this position, why the board should be fiscally, fiscally responsible, and accept Mr. Dalbert's recommendation to raise taxes. As school board directors, we have a responsibility to our district, and I take that very seriously. I also believe we cannot be short-sighted in our decisions, because that would only lead to severe consequences for our district- to severe consequences for our district in the future.
Other questions and comments?
I can comment. So I appreciate people coming in, speaking about understanding the taxes. A lot of people I speak with too knew that this is not sustainable, Republicans and Democrats. Dolan lives somewhere where taxes never increase. There have been some comments around, you know, tax increases have been suggested in the past, but it has worked out. And I questioned if it really did, because if that was the case, we wouldn't be in this position. A small tax increase over the last eight years would have changed this situation. Two small increases over the past eight years would have changed it quite a bit also. We talked a lot about facilities and programming that's been added, but what I want to talk about and what my concern is, it has been the tepid response to learning recovery post-pandemic. We've been on it for a while, and as a country and the planet, there's a lot of data out there on what works well and what does not. And what's been proven to work well is increased internal tutoring, summer learning, decreasing absenteeism, smaller class sizes, teacher training and coaching, and regular reviewing of the student data and working with the teachers. All of this costs money. And while our administration for a while now, and this year again, has been able to work wonders with the money they're being given, I want to emphasize that it's exactly that. The parameters for what they get are set by the board, and they've gotten it to work. But we haven't been able to, as a district, implement some of the serious changes we need to help our students learn better and catch up. And that's a dangerous road to be on. That is it. All my next.
Well, I'll just jump in right after. So just to address the fiscal situation our district's currently facing, fiscal responsibility is one of the ultimate tasks given to a school board. And for almost a decade, taxes have remained flat. Mr. Dalbert and his team have done a remarkable job, working well within the means of the budget provided to them. For that, the taxpayers and I are eternally grateful. However, the times now come to make the tough decisions, and they are tough. There are those who would rather the business office continue running our district in a budgeted tax rate of 2015. When we set budgets and evaluate spending today using nominal dollars without adjusting for inflation, we're ignoring the fact that today's dollar is worth only about 76% of what it was in 2015. And that's a hidden cost that impacts everything. I've spent 17 years as construction electrician in industrial settings, and never once has material gotten cheaper. In my new occupation, I've watched as the cost of projects affecting school districts have spiked since January. The reality is we cannot expect the same dollar to go the same distance. Additionally, we continue to grapple with the fact that South Middle School is 94 years old and none of our elementary schools have air conditioning. Modernizing our infrastructure will keep Penrich students competitive. Not preparing for the costs associated with upgrades will only further serve as a detriment to our students' learning environment. Arguments have been made that enrollment shrinkage should mean cost reductions, but that's a narrow view not shared by the professionals who have examined every aspect of this budget. As businesses face supply chain shortages and rising costs, they in turn raise the price of their goods and services without any thought to the number of students within our district. The fact of the matter is teachers will flee in the district in search of stable employment and competitive pay. The cost was welcomed, but only slightly moved the needle. The contract increase was needed to regain our superb teachers and staff. These are the people who we entrust to educate, prepare our children, the children who attend Penrich for the world of tomorrow. Additionally, we've heard arguments for withdrawing from our fund balance to close the gap. We cannot keep digging a hole in the expectation of finding gold. The staff that we all acknowledge as intelligent qualified and those who have the most complete and fundamental knowledge of our district's finances, I believe bear the catastrophic effects that will follow should we go this route. Pulling from our fund balance at this time isn't fiscally responsible, but it would instead only further exacerbate the situation we find ourselves in today. So to the Penn Ridge taxpayer, we don't take this responsibility lightly. I've had many discussions with family, friends, and neighbors regarding their concerns. Times are difficult for everyone, and for the health of our district, we've come to this conclusion. I just ask for your support as we continue to work for our children and their future.
I'm waiting to see whose light turns on.
I'll make a comment as well. I mentioned a lot of things at the committee meeting as well, but just, I guess reiterate, my position is not based upon my politics, or that it's like a political thing to do before election. I can't get past the fact that in 2028, we'll be debt-free, as well as with the debt fall, we've been able to have $6 million this year that has been put away into capital. And I feel like that's something that is, kind of, has been swept under the rug. I mean, $6 million just for this year, in my opinion, we should be able to be using it. We're acting like we are just getting by. And by 2028, we will be, once the debt is off, we will be taking in $12 million a year. We have, I know it was a small increase that we received from the state, but we still did receive an increase compared to last year. Also, we said we can't continue to keep digging a hole. We have never pulled from our fund balance in the last couple of years. We've always had a surplus every year. We do keep the highest percent rate that we are allowed. So we are at the max with that. Again, it's not like we're scrimping by. I still believe that all the things that those mentioned, the board wanting to do for students, with students' learning, I still believe that we can do that as well. I, so I know people, we talk to different constituents in different environments. My main environment where I'm just at because of my family is on the sports fields. So I speak to a lot of, you know, people that also have children in athletics. And I know that there's plenty of things in the community that the community would like to see, and, you know, definitely would be awesome to have some of our fields be here. And I would be more than excited and happy for those things to also take place. But we don't really have a plan as of right now, and that's something that would be, I know that administration will be working on and will be coming soon and be happy about, and hopefully have a plan with it, you know, five, 10-year plan. Also, I'm sorry, just want to look at my notes before. Oh, charter schools have been brought up a lot, but know that until the algorithm is possibly fixed, if our taxes increase, then that will increase our cost per pupil. So we will be having to pay more. And I know we keep talking about that, but I think the real question, and again, my comments are not necessarily to the administration, because I know that they're working on this, but just more importantly, the board comments. But the question is, you know, there's all this things about, you know, teachers leaving, there are also families leaving. And we really didn't dive into why families have been leaving and going to different charter schools and different things like that. And I know we hard to do, and maybe, I don't know if there's a plan to reach out and try to get some of those families back, but that can't be ignored either. It was during a time of COVID. You know, a lot of things got, you know, overturned, or there's a lot of politics, division, that's still there. But there are a lot of families that maybe didn't feel comfortable with keeping up Penrich. And I think we're all trying to get to a path where we can work together and, you know, bring that back. But, I mean, that has to be the question that we're asking, you know, why have families left and try to get that back? Sorry, I don't want to go on forever. I just, yeah, it's just that I feel like we, that $6 million this year, I can't get passed. And enrollment's gone down, and families have also moved in, so we are getting more income that way as well. It's just, okay, thank you.
I just wanted to comment that I've supported the teachers' contract. I've supported every contract for pay raises for every group in the district. I just, I don't have a great sense if we are scaled appropriately. So if we've gone down in students by about 1,000 students over the year, you know, have we, have we scaled accordingly? So, you know, if income tax is down, real estate tax collections are down, you know, I mean, a family or a business would have to scale their spending accordingly. And I don't think, you know, I don't think we are wasteful or extravagant. I just, I don't know where, where the disconnect is. I, and I don't think the board, since I've been on it, has ever denied learning recovery So I feel like we need a better understanding of how to get things in, into scale.
We've been extremely lucky in Penrich over the past eight years to not increase taxes. And we've asked Mr. Dalbert again and again to work miracles along with his staff to make it happen. But everything has a cost. In Penrich, we paid that cost by not growing, in some cases, cutting programming. We paid for it by making our staff the lowest paid in the county, not paying them or our EDR staff the true priceless value of their worth, resulting in that being one of causes of unprecedented departures of teachers in past years. Comes a point we can no longer cut without doing true harm to our children's futures. We've hit that point this year. We've begun the process of moving towards full-day kindergarten, a choice that will create economic benefit for families and businesses in our community. We slowed the loss of invaluable teachers and coaches, in part through a new contract, through new contracts, whose longevity of career here in Penrich will create incalculable benefit through the lives they touch, the relationships they build with students and families within this community. These issues needed to be fixed. Even after this improved contract, our teachers still remain amongst some of the lowest paid in the area. Most teachers who would wish to come here, who are already experienced, would have to take a significant pay cut in order to do so. But thankfully, the teaching departure has slowed. While these issues were being worked on, district income has remained static for fallen. State funding has, has slight increase, but not much. And we are anticipating decreases in federal, federal funding, along with the end of ESRS because of the end of COVID era. There's a myth that fiscal responsibility means that taxes never go up. That's not true, nor has it ever been. I remember as a young man hearing a quote on the radio, "Government is the name we give for things we choose to do together." In this case, the thing we do together is ensuring that every American citizen has the tools to utilize their unalienable right to the pursuit of happiness, as previous generations did by funding public education for all of us in this room. I would add to that, that taxes are how we pay for them. And today, in a world of rising costs, in a world of increases to what it takes to get by in this society, we don't have a choice but to make this tough decision to raise
Thank you. Is there anything else? I just wanted to comment before we voted. There are five of us on the board who voted to increase the pay of the teachers. We all agree on that. And it's costing us about $6 million this year. We all agree on it. We do have to pay for it. One thing you can say, we want to pay more, but we don't want to raise our taxes. And this puts us in a difficult situation. Also wanted to know that we, our state tax increase was $20,000 this year, which is less than, I don't even know what percentage it is. So to assume we're getting more money from the state, $20,000 doesn't go very far. And as far as recruiting, we've been discussing this, and the board's aware that we are reaching out to our students to try to get them to come back to the school from the side. So that's an ongoing program that's going to go on in the summer. You want to say something?
We've discussed several times the impact of, for example, cyber charter schools. So presently, we have 126 students in the Penrich community that get to attend a cyber charter school, to the tune of $2,453,000 annually to the budget. So we're making concerted efforts to make contact with those families to encourage and ask these families to consider sending their children to our own Penrich cyber program. Ms. Blomberg brought up athletic fields and what's the plan? So at the June Facilities Committee meeting, we will have a presentation from our engineering firm, ICS, to talk about and have a planning plan moving forward. And that could entail adding additional fields, plural, or a field to provide some relief to Helman Stadium. And that will cost money, of course. So the, in consultation with our Chief Operating Officer, to, yes, the debt's dropping off six-plus million dollars, but if we're going to have capital projects in the future, we need to be prepared for some of these projects. In addition, ICS will share a five-year capital plans project. So we want to be positioned to make sure we're solvent to every extent possible so we don't have to borrow money in the future at higher interest, interest rates with our bonds. Secondly, we want to ensure that our rating is good by holding enough in our fund balance. Is that correct, Mr. Dalbert? So we're looking to the future. There's been discussion of South Middle School, discussion of air conditioning in the elementary schools. So if we're going to forecast in the future, ultimately, taxes will have to go up at some point. I'm not going to lecture our community on the rising costs. Things cost more money than they did 2018. I know I'm being Captain Obvious right now. The cost of eggs right now has gone through the roof. Things have, the cost of things have gone up extensively. A ream of paper, computer, all of these things. Mr. Worris just mentioned two collective bargaining agreements that have gone up extensively. And we want to ensure our employees are paid a good wage for the good work they do. But all of that comes at a cost. And I think it's been wonderful to listen to our board deliberate publicly and deliver their opinion, their perspectives on things, and these aren't tough decisions. Selflessly speaking, I happen to live in a community. I go out and I encounter a lot of citizens when I go to the grocery store, when I go to Dunkin' Donuts. And this is on people's minds, the tax increase. And at times, they're uncomfortable conversations, and this is a tough decision. It's a tough recommendation for us to give, not something we take lightly. It's also a tough decision for our school board members. But to sustain eight years and think we can continue to never have a tax increase, but have these rising costs of labor contracts and the cost of materials, if you look at the rising cost of school construction right now, it's almost doubled since 2020. I believe the square footage right now for brand-new construction, now that we're doing that, is anywhere between $400 to $500 a square foot. 2020, it was around $250 a square foot. And if you hear, watching the news, you hear about tariffs and other impact this will have on materials, as Mr. Kaufman referenced earlier. So I thought it was incumbent that I make a few remarks as we sit here and take this matter forward. So, thank you, Mr. Worris.
Only other thing I wanted to add is, one of the things we also institute is a review of our requisition when someone leaves, or someone, in the past, it was traditional to rehire somebody. As part of, you know, realizing that we do have a declining enrollment, we need to focus on the cost savings. That's better than doing the reduction of force, but a lot of times, there's positions that, when reviewed, we can combine things and save some money. So that's another thing we've tasked the administration with as we go forward. Any other questions or comments?
I just have one more thing that I actually just saw in my notes that I've got to say. Quickly, with all the rising costs, I think I just want to remind everyone that a lot of our staff also lives here in this district and feels that pain of paying more for things also, and it's fair that we compensate them. The, I think only our highest-paid teachers right now can afford the median home price in this district. So I would just treat, look, treat our staff fairly. Thank you.
We're going to do a roll call of them. Uh, we're going to do a roll call of them. Have you been standing up there long?
Mrs. Blomberg?
No.
Mr. Jakes out here. Mr. Cormac?
No.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mr. Merkelgum?
Yes.
Mrs. Rash?
Yes.
Mrs. Shreeno?
Yes.
Mr. Wurz?
Yes.
Five to three, motion passes. The next finance meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, June 10th. Moving on to personnel.
Good evening. The two items on the agenda tonight are related to board positions. So the first is a motion to approve Nancy Chenwith, the school board secretary, for a four-year term as required by Section 404 of the school code.
Second. Second by Mr. Cormac. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those against? Motion passes eight to zero.
And the second is for school board treasurer. So I make a motion to approve Sean Dogbert as treasurer for the 25-26 school year.
Second.
Second by Mr. Merkelgum. Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those against? Motion passes eight, zero.
The next Personnel Committee meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, June 10th.
Moving on to Student Services, Mrs. Shreeno?
Thank you. Our last Student Service Committee meeting was on May 5th. Two ski trips were proposed, one to Western PA, and the other was for a Vermont ski trip that we've been doing for over 20 years.
Excuse me, it's not Western PA, just.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's right.
It's Western, USA.
Western USA, I'm talking about. In addition, we were given a detailed, comprehensive school counseling presentation from our elementary, mid-on-high school counseling teams. I encourage you all to listen to it. On our district YouTube channel, it was very informative. They spoke about their counseling services, which included building relationships, visibility, accessibility, classroom lessons, PBIS programs, crisis intervention, case management for 504 and gifted screening, academic focus, including course selection, team meetings, career plans, and tech school visits starting in grade sets. All of the counselors also emphasized the importance of relationship building and parent collaboration. The high school counselors highlighted how the implementation of ramp time has allowed for flexible student support in college career programming. There was a lot covered in the presentation, and I again urge you to look, to take a look at our May 5th Student Services Committee meeting, and you can see for yourself the dedication our counseling staff has on the success of our students. Last but not least, we were also presented with the Unified Team USA Games Trip Proposal. This is very exciting, as the Penridge was selected to represent Pennsylvania at the 2026 USA Special Olympic Games in Minneapolis. Our team will include four athletes and four unified partners. Our students will participate in preparatory webinars, practices, and events beginning immediately throughout the summer, which is why we're looking at this now. A motion to approve the following overnight trips, A through C.
Second.
Second by Mr. Merkelgum. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those against? Motion passes eight, zero.
The next Student Services Committee meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, June 3rd.
All right, keep moving right along. Old business? Is there any old business? New business? We do have a new business item, and it is the approval of the 2025-26 Penridge School Board Committee meeting schedule. If you're not aware, we are, um, just as a, if you didn't notice, we will be moving the board meetings till 6:30 at night, as we do with all committee meetings starting in the, uh, 20, starting September, August, sorry, yeah. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those against? Motion passes eight to zero. Public comment? We have no one signed up for the end-of-meeting comments. We'll skip that. Uh, the executive session was held prior to tonight's meeting to discuss personnel matters under Section 708. The next school board meeting is scheduled for Monday, June 16th, 2025.